Meeting minutes or twenty-three. What was it?
We got twenty, uh, well, twenty-three, I went on. Hold on for now.
Twenty-eight, we have twenty-eight. January, why are we waiting on this?
I want to, I haven't ready yet.
Okay, we're in those and I'll read those. So, we're holding the vote.
Yeah.
Uh, payroll and APs were already signed. Um, so we go.
Is it possible to get the mini meeting minute posted by Friday? And then, you know, people that are in the audience that maybe said something, they could review them. Something to think about. Because usually what happens is the select board gets the meeting minutes, but the people out in the audience don't.
Well, you wouldn't get them until they're approved.
Well, um, but if there's something in there that you want to, let's just say, you know, I said something and it was misquoted in the minutes, but I don't have them until they're approved, then.
At that point, you would bring it to the next meeting or after the approval and say, hey, there needs to be a correction to this and then we would vote on it. Reason I would not put them out to the public is then everybody's interpretation of what they see on Zoom or on Facebook. Wow, I didn't see, take it that way. Nope. No, I ain't got the time or the patience to have, you know, seventeen hundred people criticize, you know, four words in a, in a paragraph. You know what I mean? So, si- sixteen ninety? Yeah, but you know, people are being born. Yeah, so we could be a seventeen or one, Joe. Easy, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah, I'm a little revisionist.
Well, then let's talk about your revision.
Uh, this is, uh, can't be done, I said, it may be done.
Okay, so, with the girl. For us, miss for Alex on center.
It wasn't stating as the last.
How about any, any couple tactics from surprise, we mentioned. Taxpayers came again through ads in the newspapers.
Yep, not can, may. Definitely, no.
May. Did it?
Yep, I'll sign it.
All in favor of both twenty-three and twenty-eight, January?
Seven.
Perfect. Sweet.
I'm gonna sign it.
Okay, so, minutes are good. Okay, uh, I'm going to make a motion to create and appoint members to the Community Resilience Committee, also known as a crickets, crickets. They have, you know, gang symbols already, they were doing it the other night, you know? So, um, I will make the motion that we create that committee and what it is for is a resiliency uh, grants that we've already uh, signed a letter of intent with C E B A, C E B E, C B. Um, there are no buy-in grants. It's, and there's multiple awards per year, what, every eight, ten months? So, the potential's out there for, you know, some free money for the town that we're gonna accept. There is no buying. So, I'll make that motion.
So, are we gonna list the names of?
That's real.
Okay.
So, we need to create a committee first before I can say who's on the committee. Second, any discussion? All in favor? Perfect. So, we have the members. Here we go. So, the members are as follows. The chair will be Holly Hager. Terry Egan, Joe Egan, Sue Zeland, Judy McElvein, Barb Moulton, and Deb Tate. Uh, we will, is everyone on board with the community members?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Hey, what's the authority on?
What do you mean, what's their authority?
Well, uh,
As a committee, they really have no authority other than to hold meetings, public meetings, and then they bring the stuff to the select board against the ultimate decision.
That's why we try to be thoughtful.
Yeah, yep. Alright, so. Of course, you guys. Hang on, just a second. Yep.
It's a, uh, committee, I'd like, I'm interested, I'd love to be a part of as well.
Please, uh, please attend the next meeting, which is what, the February, it's February twenty-fifth? Twenty-fifth at six. He correct? Yes, so please attend.
That would make it into the number. We have to, we have to keep it in the odd numbers.
We should.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you select that or approve a committee and then have the chair and all of its members already selected?
Why not? Why can't we?
They, they, they vote for who the chair is, the committee, when that's wrong. Yeah, and they vote for the offices of the committee once it's.
Right, right, right. I'm in planning board on the town.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm just curious as to how, how you enact the committee tonight, but yet you already have the chair selected.
Well, that's just it, is this is a committee, not a board. So, a board, your boards are elected. Your committees are appointed. So, who carries the appointment authority? That's the Board of Select. So, i- i- as a board, it would be the taxpayers. And then they would have to revert to their rules if so done by the taxpayer i- in a vote, like a planning board, you know, they have rules, they have fall, that was a town vote. Taxpayer done.
So, they'll all be posted on the website?
Yep.
Members in, uh, yeah.
They should have their own calendar page everywhere, put on the calendar, correct?
Yeah.
When's that?
There's some.
I think it's, I think it's, because I'm on my phone.
Yeah, there was some stuff missing in, so I think we're still trying to. All the stuff that you come over.
Yeah, I didn't see the dog.
It is now.
It's over there now?
But you have to go over to resources and go into library kind of dog ordinance, where it should be just under ordinances, but I tried to learn this, but it didn't work.
But it works bugs out of it.
I played on Facebook.
Yeah.
But it's too big, so I write to land and then I explain that self-photography on Facebook, I would get to land, step by step, so they should request it.
Okay, so informational meetings, date, time, and location. Location will always be at the community center. The first one will be the dog ordinance, which is Thursday, this Thursday, the sixth, at seven, at six P M. Six P M, right?
Six P M.
At the community center, and it's an informational meeting. We're gonna go over the, answer any questions if anybody has in the newly proposed anal control ordinance, which would repeal the current dog. Uh, Friday, this week, six P M, will be the municipal fire department ordinance. And then next Wednesday, same location, six P M, for the short-term rental. Um, they're all informational meetings and any requested changes or whatnot, we, that gives us time to get it vetted through legal for their review in order for the defendability in uh, the public hearing. Alright, we have a new authorized list for MMA contact information for contact and information, uh, dated yesterday. Uh, those calls, uh, the selectman, town clerk, tax selector, deputy town clerk, code enforcement, assessor, admin assistant, fire chief and health officer. That needs to change. So. Uh, planning board chair, secretary, budget committee chair, top plan, implementation committee chair, planning board and various committees as appointed. Joe Egan, they're specifically named, public works director, rec director, and fire chief. So, we need to make a change, uh, get rid of the fire chief on this one. And then we is Bill here tonight?
Nope.
No?
Good here, I'm here.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, so if you could, make the change to this. Do that next week. Um, we can vote on that. Well, actually, let's vote on it now, that will be changed. So, with the change of this, it's, it's in two spots. The health officer, Bill Flynn, and this is giving, uh, these people the ability to reach up to MMA to ask questions. You give a round and make a move? I make the motion, we approve this person. Well, we did, but it's been received, so we have to. So, I'll make the motion, we accept it with the, with this change.
I just want to approve. I want to read over there.
I'll say. Good. Remember that?
Yep.
All in favor? Awesome. Well, don't vote. It's been approved.
Okay.
With change. And once we, all the shit is printed back out, then we can start. Sorry, we recorded. That's for your change, man. Okay, North Conway Incinerator, uh, got an email from North Conway Incinerator. Currently, we're paying three-twenty per trip per container to get hauled either to EcoMaine or to, uh, Mount Carberry, okay? Um, we got an email. Oh, what day was that? I'll pull it up that way, I can read it to you. Okay, there you go. So, it was dated January thirtieth, uh, twelve twenty-five. Uh, new pricing for roll-offs, good afternoon. I've gone over the numbers for hauling the waste, new pricing would be seven fifty per trip. I realize it is a big jump from the existing pricing, however, I have not increased my price for a long time. I can send over a written proposal for the next selectmen's meeting. So, I want everybody to be cognizant of that. Uh, that's more than a double, more than double. Um, so, I am of the opinion, I'm not speaking for my colleagues, many taxpayers, but I think it would be very prudent for the town of Brownfield to seriously look at getting our own roll-off truck, buying the three containers and having an, an employee, part of the public works department, that has the licensing, C D L, to operate it. Um, return on investment, even if, even if we had adding another employee, say, for fifty thousand dollars as the salary, which I'm not saying that's what it is, these are all hypothetical numbers, so nothing is in stone, nothing's been set out, it has to go to town vote. We're creating a position and with payroll and benefit. So, if it's fifty thousand, add what, twenty-five on it for benefits and taxes and all that good stuff. Sound about right? So, that's seventy-five thousand dollars. Currently, we're raising and appropriating eighty-two thousand for the trucking. So, with a full-time employee with benefits, we're sa- we would be saving with that payroll ha- you know, half of what we would be spending in trucking alone. So, I, I, I really think it is time that the town considers buying that piece of equipment, you know, the truck, and creating that, because, I mean, as it stands now, we're halfway through and that change, that price change is gonna happen, I believe, this month or next. So, we just went from eighty-two thousand to a hundred and sixty-four thousand, just in trucking. So, um, I would, I would welcome opinion on this. Um, and again, I want to stress, I'm not speaking for my colleagues, this is just me. So, yes.
I think it's a great idea, and I think it's long overdue. Um, if we have our own, um, roll-off truck, um, I think in the long run, we're gonna save. And I think one of the things that we should look into is to see if a neighboring town like Denmark or Hyrum would want to do, would want to win on with us. Uh, because it won't be used every day, the whole lot. So, something to consider. And, um, it would be good if we could, you know, get those numbers based on seven fifty times however many trips we do in a year, you know, on average. You know, I think that would really bring it home to the residents to see just how much it's costing us. And over, let's say, a ten-year period, you know, of how much it would cost us versus having our own trucks.
I do a five-year period, because that's about the, the, the length of the contract. Um, we did a three-year, it was nineteen to twenty-two, I think. Um, three-year, and the next two years, there was no effective contract, it was kind of an agreement, yeah, we're not changing anything, so we're good, just keep, you know, plugging along. And, uh, so I do a five-year, I would do a five-year. Yes.
Do we already own the?
Not all of them, no, we own two out of the five, three out of five. I think we own three out of five.
Yeah.
So, now the ones we, we pay lease on. Yes. Yeah.
Does that include the recycling, um, container?
Correct. That's leased. Was the least, yep. Both the ones on the compacters are leased, yep.
Do you have an idea what the price range would be ballpark figures for to buy a truck like that?
Seventy-five ish, between fifty and eighty, I'd figure in that, because we'd get probably a fairly newer truck, low mileage, um, that ain't gonna be with probably that kind of money. Yes.
Your remote truck, when you just pull, slap that off and be.
It's not heavy now. It's not heavy now. It's gotta have a, a capacity of sixty thousand, sixty-three thousand pounds. It's gotta be a twin screen. So.
Was just gonna say, are you going out to look for, or are you gonna form another committee to check in?
I wouldn't. Me personally, I wouldn't form a committee, but to colleagues, they, you see, so, yes.
I, I got a question, isn't it a little bit like, you guys want trash pickup?
Nope.
See?
Now.
It's a slippery slope when you start buying, buying trucks all the way to trash, next thing you know, you're doing door-to-door trash pickup at six hundred.
Okay, so the truck we're talking about is.
I understand, I understand.
So, what, so what's the, what's the slope? I don't understand.
The, um, a lot of people from away are not, they all want trash picked up.
Okay, they can, alright, so.
So, when you might just add town meeting, when you propose something like this, the people from away are gonna want trash picked up, and they're gonna look right at you, like, why is it tracking?
Well, the people from away, one, won't be voting in the, in the town meeting because they're not residents. So, unless they're residents, they have no say. So, correct, registered voters. Now, the presentation of the request for a truck isn't for a garbage truck. So, that's, that's where the, the distinction's gonna happen, is we're getting a roll-off truck to haul our compacters and open-top bins to either Carberry or EcoMaine, which we need to talk about as well. Alright, sorry. Prices going up down the street, EcoMaine. So, there is no, there are contractors out there that are well-known for trash pickup. They don't, the, the town is not offering door-to-door trash pickup, nor will we, we won't, we, we can't afford that. So, that would be the, the major difference in the town meeting in setting up for a roll-off truck, we're, we're not looking to get door-to-door garbage trucks, that's, that's not the purpose. It's strictly so that we can save on the trucking of our transfer station to the, the two locations that we built. Because we don't haul the metal, that's done by C I A, they own the dumpster anyway. So, our stuff either goes to EcoMaine or Mount Carberry. And was that Berlin or?
Berlin.
Yeah, Berlin, so, those are the only two locations, I think.
We know of any other towns that did that, like bought their own truck to haul?
Level does.
Okay.
Level does. Yeah, I'm not sure if Fryberg does not.
Now, long have been doing that?
Probably will. Long's been for a while.
Can we get like some input from them, like?
They, they really got a total different setup, open like I've already talked to them, they have trailers so, with live mottos in them, that's where they put their trash in, and then they haul, you know, so they got two trailers. And then they haul their, they haul it themselves, yeah, they van their own uh, cardboard and stack it.
Is that something we don't, we're not doing?
We don't, we don't have the facility.
Well, we got that single saw. Amazing, EcoMaine.
So, that's something we couldn't look at or look into?
So, we used to do. When we, well, we never banned it our own.
No, but we separated sorting. Right, we did separate sorting cardboard, yeah.
Right, and they didn't want to go into the same place.
Yeah.
They wanted to go to Harvard. Um, we can ask about it, but I think we're gonna be biting off enough that we can chew, we're just getting a truck and a full-time employee that has the capabilities to get our trash out of here. Before we look into banning our own, buying the machine to ban and compact and do all that and setting up the facility, because their stuff's inside.
Is there a way we could compost some more to like build our piles up over there to come, like the compost piles, can we add some more stuff to not have to ship out?
Like what?
Like, like, um, some of this, um, stuff that's compost that builds soil that we could compost.
Okay, what I'm asking, Vinny, is what, what stuff we can't throw house, household trash out on?
Same.
Right, so what would you want us to, because we don't have any recycling other than cardboard, plastics.
So, there's no recycling at all?
There is cardboard and plastics. No, we don't, we did the, we had a deal with the, the, uh, the, oh, what was that thing called? It was costing us like, what, eighteen hundred bucks a year for them to come and get like a food, a ten, ten-pound bag? The kids are not.
Just compost it right out back at the transfer station and just.
Compost what? That's the key.
That, those bags.
No. No, because, and I'm gonna say no, only because we gotta have somebody that's gonna be able to have to watch that. Because otherwise, we're gonna have people that are gonna get down there, well, I thought it was compostable, and next thing you know, we got all kinds of animals that are tearing our transfer station apart. Because they're going out there and they're, they're throwing stuff that shouldn't be out there, and now we're gonna have somebody go out there, pick the plastics out of it, because, oh, well, sorry, I made a mistake, you know, this was supposed to be compost, but you know, my kids threw in all this trash on top of it and I didn't see it. Now, we have to get somebody to go out there and pick all that stuff up.
What if we had a program where they could get signed off on knowing what to do and what to do that?
We still, we're still, we still have to be cognizant, though.
We had a committee that overseen the volunteers, so we could volunteer attend to that. It saves a lot of money. We're spending that much money and it's more than doubling the price to ship out stuff we could be composting.
Well, tipping fees didn't go up. The tipping fees didn't, didn't change, tipping fees have remained the same, it's the trucking fees.
Yeah.
That's, that's where, that's surprising. I don't know, we didn't see a lot of change when we were doing that, that, uh, compost thing, we really didn't. I mean, and then getting the truck to come down and pick it up, was it? I mean, they say that they'd come down and the transfer station guys were around. Uh, we haven't seen them guys in like three weeks, but we were being charged, because it was charged weekly. And then when they showed up, oh, well, sorry, guys, it's frozen, I, I, I can't take it, it's frozen. Um, it's winter time in Maine.
Yeah.
Well, we, well, can we?
Right, right, and, and we've run into the same problem with the, uh, recycling. If it freezes, EcoMaine will send back an entire load because it won't all come out. So, we want to send it to Carberry because EcoMaine won't reach it and tough all the stuff out of there. It has to go to Carberry where they use the excavator and they cuff it all out and it goes to the landfill. So, there's a lot of different aspects to it that, you know, hey, I get it, you know, people want to compost, but to put it on a large scale and have to be responsible for maintaining it, that's where the problem comes in, because you know, if your volunteer doesn't show up, volunteers are volunteers, when they have time, they volunteer, um, if they don't have the time, they don't. So, that puts the onus and responsibility back on to our transfer station employees, and I don't think it's fair, because we only have two of them on during the winter months, three, uh, for the seasonal, for summer. So, how, how reasonable was it?
Is that something we could leave open for the future with the resilience committee to, if we could figure something out with other communities that are doing it to make something make sense with the taxpayers?
In the past, uh, the town had did a thing with, they called the Earth Machine, they provided, uh, a container, uh, what was the one, a road potato, but anyway, and that went for a little while, but then they, this past time, they did where they collected the composting in a plastic bag, and you had to have it in a plastic bag put in there, so they really weren't composting, that was a composter energy plant, and that was more geared towards urban areas where the collection was close, you know, between cities, so it was profitable. So, and then the other thing is, most people, a lot of people in town do their own copa, own composting. So, the little bit they did collect really doesn't justify, you know, universally collecting it in a one area at the dump for the cost, uh, because most people here do do their own compost, citizens. So, uh, yeah, I mean, uh, I think it's just not cost-effective, uh, to do it, to try to do it, because it would be so minimal that would be collected, it wouldn't justify the total cost, in my opinion, from what I've seen, yeah.
Brian?
Try to try to haul the stuff in the dump.
Yeah, right now, the price is three-twenty per container.
No. When you haul it there, dump.
The tipping, the tipping fees varies by, it goes by weight. It's done by weight.
Ton of, um, household waste and it's a hundred and eighteen dollars a ton for recycling.
The good thing about the recycling is if recycling prices are up, then we make money. As long as our loads are clean, we don't pay anymore. It's a set price, and our transfer station guys do a hell of a job making sure that our large loads aren't going down to EcoMaine contaminating. They do a really good job with that. They always say, I think in, in three years that I can remember, only one was kinda, but EcoMaine, really, they let it go because it was kinda like a judgment call. Well, yeah, you're right on the verge, but they let it go. So, our guys are doing a phenomenal job with that. Terry?
Um, as part of the comprehensive planning implementation committee, uh, Steve Nutting, the chair, went and met the town of Fryberg to see what they did for composting, to see if it would work for us, and they went through everything and it just can try and. Yeah. Yeah.
Deb?
Um.
Don't yell at me.
Cardboard and plastics.
Yep.
Is that all that you take?
No, glass, whatever, the dude in the glass. You've been to the transfer station, correct? Alright, so you know which dumpster you throw in your recyclable stuff in, and you know which one takes what, correct? So, I'll leave it that way, because I don't get down there. I have a dumpster that I pay to have haul, so forgive me if I'm, if I said plastics and, and just plastics and, and cardboard. Whatever it is that they recycle at Brownfield Transfer Station, just, that's what it is. Correct. You can't put pizza boxes in with the cardboard because they have grease. So, you can do.
Yeah, it could be soil, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know, I got a dumpster.
But I think the town has an EcoMaine. There's a lot of plastic trays can be recycled, yeah, in some form.
Ninety-four percent of our trash goes to the landfill. Coords.
I mean, people in the city have their own dumpster.
Easy, you know, stop the finger poking, Joe. Barb, you had something? No, okay.
Stand there all day, every day, but be done, yeah, the transfer station, so, and build your sort of garbage. All those people want to listen to you. Unless you get a batch, like, yeah.
Alright. Uh, we had a uh three thirty to about five twenty executive session with the town's attorney. Uh Kathleen Wade on the personnel policy. Uh, review is done and we should have the. Reviewable personnel policy to the board by uh closing business on Wednesday of next week. If it's earlier, great. Um, so that'll become a long. Um.
Does that mean personnel policy?
It's the personnel policy for the town of Brownfield. So employment, uh, all, it, it's actually, uh, quite a bit. Um, we have the. Employment, equal opportunity, ADA verification of rights to work, drugs, alcohol, telephone, cell phone use, computer usage, social media policy, probation evaluation. Uh, organization of municipal officials, employees, public employee relations. I mean, it's, it's quite a bit. It's the standard. Personnel policy you would expect to see in any of them. So we're good. Alright, Mr. Carbone, you're on the agenda for our social media.
Yep. Even you got the email?
Yeah.
Well, I left the house and it wasn't in my uh, I checked the email before I left the house. I. I left around a quarter of three.
When did you send it?
Uh, hmm.
I do not have anything from you.
We'll get to this.
Your mind, Mr.
Well, no, I've gotten emails from them.
Well, you, I think you were gonna send it to me and have me forward it. I'm not sure we talked very.
Yeah.
Nobody's got any information or info, we said.
I sent it to you.
So what does it say, Vinnie?
Well, it was, it's stuff, an email that I sent to them to. Give them a heads up and I'll to debrief them on what was going on. With the, with the topic that I presented. I was also, I put it on the agenda, tried to put it, brought it up to the um, you guys yesterday thinking. It was gonna be for next week, you know what I mean? For next week's um, selectmen's meeting. It wasn't something that I came prepared to talk about because it's something that's um. It, it's a situation that's hard to really talk about because being a victim of the situation at hand, you know, and. Being supposedly misunderstood, but. An issue of a lack of knowledge of. Of a case law, of our public works director and what he's doing online. Uh, getting our. Taxpayers in a lot more trouble with potential litigation issues.
Uh, okay. So I'm gonna ask you, what's the potential litigation issue?
Well, that's, that's why it's, it's all in the. So he's online committing. Offenses on social media. It's our public works director.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna ask you a question. Uh. The definition of offenses.
Yep.
Could I have that page?
Which one?
The definition of offenses. You're, you just stated that he's committing offenses. So please give me the definition. Provide the definition to us of what the offense is.
Not concerned about how you respond to it. We're gonna respond to how you guys. Respond or don't respond to dealing with the public works director.
Who's we?
Committing. We, the people, taxpayers.
Okay.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Is he saying, is he saying things like on an official capacity?
I wish you, it's diligence to look into these issues at hand. It's not my duty to come in to educate you guys as overseers of the poor. I'm expecting you guys to look out for us when in a situation. I'm wondering how many lawsuits we're faced with right now. Is that?
Is that a question?
Yeah.
Okay, we have no, no pending lawsuits.
So what happened to the ones we had to take care of?
What lawsuits? Give me, give me the lawsuit. Town of Brown, uh, whoever, whatever versus Town of Brownfield. Please provide that.
Oh, see, that's what I'm asking you.
No, what I'm telling you, Vinnie, is there are no pending lawsuits against the town of Brownfield. So if you're, if you're referring to lawsuits against the town of Brownfield. Uh, again, I, I would love, I would like for you to tell me.
Covering them up.
There was, Vinnie, not covering it up. There is, there is no. Brassiska. Hey, and that was how long?
Toby.
Who, who said it didn't exist? No, 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 no. Okay.
Well, see, see, just like laughing like that.
Vinnie, listen, okay, we, the town of Brownfield has no current lawsuit filed against the town of Brownfield. That was settled three years ago. Do, do you understand? Do you understand, Vinnie? Do you understand what the, do you understand what the case was? Do you, do you know? Okay.
It was you guys made a lot of mistakes.
No. What, 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 what did, what did we pay out? What did we pay out? It's, I'm sorry? You don't call point order.
It's not, it's the, the.
No, this isn't town meeting. Okay, this is a selectmen's meeting. The audience does not. Point of order, anything. This is a selectmen's meeting and this table sets policy on how the meeting is conducted and what gets said. So point of order is for a town to need it.
Vinnie, you wanted to talk about social, the issue on social media?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we just stick with that? And, yeah, that's the point you were bringing up.
I was reading his email. I was reading your email. Um, I was, I was, I was, yeah. So, um. The, the reason I'm asking about the social media part of it, Vinnie, is you have, um. When you started off, it was the offenses by the public works director. And I asked for a definition of what those offenses are.
Yep.
I've not provided, I've not been provided an offense. Um. I have no problems addressing any of the employees of the town of Brownfield. Um, but one thing that everybody needs to be very clear and aware of. Is. It is a very fine line between. The. What is unacceptable and what is First Amendment, okay?
Not very fine, fine, there's case law.
Okay, well, oh, hang on, hang on. We just had this discussion with an attorney.
Who, Liam?
Okay, no.
Who?
Kathleen Wade. Kathleen Wade.
Who does she work for?
Drummond Woodson.
So do they still work for us?
Yes. Yes.
I'd like to speak with them. That's what we're talking to about.
No, sorry. I'll get, we will not get tech, we will not get, well, you can believe me or not, I'm not asking you to. Well, I'm not asking you to. So.
Anything with your job?
I, and I do. I think I do. Okay, I mean, that's your opinion. I, I appreciate. Well, I appreciate your opinion. I do. But it was, it was, Vinnie?
I said, don't be a liar.
Okay, um, just.
Again, and again, and again.
Okay.
All nine one, making false accusations.
Alright, Vinnie, okay, Vinnie, I was trying to give you the definition. Alright, Vinnie. Point, now there's a point of order. Vinnie, you're done. You're done. That is it. This is a selectmen's meeting. I am the chairman and guess what? Vinnie, I'm asking you to leave. Okay.
You're gonna, this is what you want to do, Vinnie? You're not in charge. You would have to talk to the other board members to ask what's going on. You're being a dictator and making this the same. Well, we now, now that you've got this all set up. I had a social, I work for the people. This is the people's meeting.
Yep. No, it's not town meeting. It's a selectmen's meeting.
No, it's the chief selectmen's meeting.
Hi, eighty-two Main Street in Brownfield.
Well, I'm not grateful for you to call the cops when I'm questioning you about your abuse of authority and your color of law. Yeah, and it's funny, Steve.
Enough.
Okay.
Well, I'm asking a serious question. Uh, ninety-three, five, two, zero, zero, seven.
I don't understand. This is a person that calls nine one one.
Get out of my trouble. I asked you to.
This is a selectmen's meeting. We don't even have to let anyone talk.
Talking to Ricky Emery, who sent me to court twice.
That's not my issue.
Do not.
Do I? I was enough. Where's, look, then, can somebody explain to me what's going on here and what I'm doing? Well, I'm not even really sure what is going on. I don't understand it. I don't know either. That's my, he's calling, does he call the nine one one? Well, he asked me to stop, he didn't. I'm the last one on the agenda, Joe. Look. There's.
You're the last one on the agenda for social media. You're not even talking about social media.
Because this is where conversation with him leads.
No.
I don't need to talk to you. You went way out of it. You didn't know what to talk about. The conversation.
We're, we're just waiting to see what goes on. We don't need a lot of conversation going on. It's starting everybody.
So what's going on here? I don't, I don't know what's happening right now. He's on the phone with, what, who, nine one one?
Well, yes, really.
He's like, oh, happy birthday. He's best friends with. So that's favoritism and cronyism and kind of conflict of interest and apparent impropriety because our chief selectman is in bed with a cronyist. Look at him. That's sickening.
Well, we should have stuck with the social media.
I tried.
Yeah, I know.
I was trying to. He said, he's making all different facial expressions and I didn't need to speak with him personally. No, I did not. By what you said. That's not a lie. He's, he's like.
Alright, the meeting will come to water. Mr. Carbone, I'm gonna ask you to please be quiet. So we can finish the meeting.
Yeah.
Very well, thank you. Okay. It is. Alright, so. Vinnie, I asked you to be quiet. If you can't be quiet, I'm gonna ask you to leave again. And I've already got it, I've already got it, I've got, I've got. Oxford County coming. I'm not, I'm not. Vinnie, I just asked you to be quiet and then you have something to say. Please be quiet. They don't want to hear us.
You're saying something to my breath back.
Then whisper it. Then whisper it. Fine. Uh, Saka River Corridor Commission. Uh, this was sent to the. CEO Planning Board. And the town clerk. There were two permits that were granted. January twenty-second. Gary and Linda Pelletier permits zero two zero four one and zero two zero four four. Uh, for the water, high water line on Saka River at four sixty-one Denmark Road in Brownfield. So those are already been done. Uh. Just your way. Yeah, there's a commission of uh order in matter. So that's all. This is essentially just a. Uh, formality to let us know that those, that those permits were given. Uh.
I received that check. That's why I put it in there. That was uh, for the red next door. I didn't know if you wanted to talk about it today or next time.
Want to talk about that? Is it? Oxford County. Yeah. Think we should get rid of it or just keep it or what?
We're moving?
Uh, not yet. It could be. This could be part of a slush one.
I used to sell slush. Charlie, Charlie knows.
Down on the line of this.
We're the fun ones down at the target.
Okay.
The reason is because of police presence. The police presence and I know from history, we used to have a constable and had to pay them, so. True, that would cover it.
Right. What is that? Your thoughts?
Honestly, yep.
I say get rid of it.
That's an annual, that's an annual fee.
And just. Appreciate, appreciate the police presence and the.
Uh huh, yeah. That's for the uh, the distribution?
Yes.
Yeah, we discussed that.
Cop shop.
Yeah.
Maybe we get a donut maker over there. So. Okay, so I will make a motion to return this, so the Oxford County Sheriff's Department. Uh, that's our county of Oxford for the rental of the, the substation. Um. And to subsequently not charge them rent on a yearly basis. How's that? All in favor? Persons. Should you send that back to them?
Yes, I'll send a letter.
Uh, Mount Washington Valley Economic Council sent a letter to the board. Um. It is typical to have a representative on this uh council. In the past, Holly Hazard held this position. She has since done that, uh, done away with that. So I would ask. If anybody in the public would be interested in filling this vacancy.
Support.
The Mount Washington Valley Economic Council. Um. The Mount Washington Valley Economic Council surrounding, serving the surrounding towns of Conway, Jackson, Bartlett, Chatham, Tamworth, Madison, Osley, Freedom. And Freiburg and Brownfield in Maine continue to concentrate on its main vision, mission of providing public loans for local and new businesses in the valley. The council's revolving loan fund has over twenty-five loans at play, placing some six hundred and fifty thousand in investment dollars at work in the area. Property development at Tech Village has been adversely delayed by the lack of capital to complete the contiguous circle that connects both the main and the vested entrances. This handicap will be corrected in twenty twenty-five with new sources of grants to complete the project. This road completion will open the possibility of development for three major new parcels of land. Further supporting to the council's mission to enhance our communities by fostering the formation of new businesses. And attracting businesses to relocate to the area with a commitment to help them diversify, prosper and enhance their sustainability. While preserving the region's natural beauty. The council was successful in staging political debates in two, two thousand twenty-four, including an unclaimed event in the race for governor. This type of community service is a kind of community service education that was commonplace when the council shared the building with Granite State College's Evening Studies. Although the council no longer has access to large meeting rooms, it has been fortunate to have the sport of valley vision to share these events with the community. Looking ahead, the council will have major new property available for development with the completion of the road circle. At present, there is a purchase and sale agreement on lot number two with a new light manufacturing business. The council will continue to consult, train and support the, those new businesses. Business ventures that enrich the qualities of non-retail recreation employment opportunities in the Mount Washington Valley. John A. Cuddy, Executive Director. So I would ask if, if there's any, anybody that would be interested in, in being on this council, reach out to Holly Hazard. She's. Pretty easygoing. Nice lady. Sure, she'd be more than willing to answer your questions and provide a little in, insight to. Cause she's been on the council, I want to say at least three years. So, um, she's a pretty smart lady. Alright. Okay. Uh, MMA, uh. Uh, association dude. Who? Have that?
Association dues was three thousand dollars.
Okay, I don't see it.
Was in the tables this week.
Oh, okay. So we went up. Uh, just look for me. Denmark ATV Club, Bob Spear. Denmark ATV Club, Bob Spear, dated January twenty ninth via email. I'd like to submit for some time with the select board to discuss ATV access routes in Brownfield. I'm sure you are familiar with this issue which remains open with Maine DOT. I'll bring Maine DOT communications and contacts to the meeting. My goal is to get a select member to take up the open access route request with Maine DOT. To see if we can get it resolved, I have been unable to make any progress with DOT and have told it. Have been told it requires town selectmen involved in. Please see if there is time available for this in an upcoming selectman meeting and let me know when I can bring this to the board. So uh, the eleventh is when our next scheduled meeting, that will be at the community center. With the six o'clock Public Safety Building Committee uh taking the, the confluence of that. Um, so what about the eleventh, so the eighteenth, I think is the next one. Would we wanna put it on the agenda the eighteenth? Anyway, okay, um, Ms. Patty, could you reach out to him and? So it'll be February eighteen meeting. February eighteen meeting. So that's gonna be. So this week isn't, so next week's supposed to be. Okay, so it won't be, that's next week. Perfect. Okay, we're getting to the end of the uh. The Fenn Hill Project, um, money should be done, I did see that we got our permits, the remainder of our permits. So we're good there. Yeah. Yeah. So we're good, we're good with that, um, just so we know, we got two hundred twenty five thousand in grant, uh, and we had talked about this. There may be a requirement for the town of Brownfield to have uh five thousand dollars in escrow with ten or contingency. On this project. Um, we don't need to raise and appropriate any monies, nor do we have to uh worry so much about the contingency because we have. Uh, road project money in. Our current budget that was already raised and appropriated, that will cover this cost. So we're getting essentially two hundred and forty five thousand dollars for free. Uh, because that's what the grant money will cover for that Fenn Hill project. Um, and that, a lot of that went through uh Troutzow Unlimited and uh Maine DOT, now uh we had signed with DEP, maybe you could. Um, for that, so inspection, I think the inspection is gonna happen in April. Um, they go out and do an inspection on the wildlife, make sure that no endangered bats or newts or whatever lizards out there that. Uh, could be harmed and then the project will start, I do believe we did get uh confirmation with Drew Court. The ones that we had originally uh awarded that bid to uh two years ago, two years ago. Two, yeah, two or three years ago. But we, we did award that bid, but the money wasn't there, so now we're, we're good with that. So that's well on its way. Good. Uh, select board is gonna be having some. Another workshop, uh, so we can finalize the articles for the referendum. Um, the town clerk has asked that we have our articles created and turned into her by uh February fifteenth. So that they can. Uh, put it together and start creating the, the warrant. And the absentee ballots. Uh, she is very well aware that during the entire process, that there will be a uh public accessibility for review. So it will be up. Okay, that's STR. Fire terms branch where everybody knows about that. And that's kinda, so we're good there. Yeah.
Cover is here, right?
Okay. All right. You have anything there?
As a matter of fact, they do. Twenty twenty two audits are complete. They're just rocking up twenty twenty three, so there is some light at the end of the tunnel, so. Wow, that was good news today.
Yes.
Also. Also. No, I'm good. Said something.
So, I would, I would, I will make this announcement. Uh, we hired the administrative assistance position as of yesterday. Um, it's Patty Drain. Welcome to our board, please. Please be patient, she's a little bit of a learning curve to get fixed in the office, the ladies in the office will take me very well, very well care of her. I appreciate everybody being patient with her if you come in and she's takes a little bit because she's gotta get worked into things. So I'd appreciate it very much. Anybody in the public? Yes, ma'am.
Thank Benny, Rick, thanks for all you do.
Very well.
Very good. It's good that everybody's working together. We're trying.
It's true, yes, true.
Anybody else? What, what you got, brother?
Um, will the proposed municipal fire ordinance and short term ordinance, will they, will they be posted online?
They are. They are. They're on the town website.
Here, if you look under ordinances, posted there, yeah, I don't know how to get them there yet, so I have to make a phone call.
The dog ordinance and the municipal fire department ordinance, those I found on the old website. So yes, they are available, yep, and you can always stop here and get a coffee. Yeah, because you're setting up the head tape. Yep. Nope, not happening, brother. Not happening. We're gonna keep you ready for. Keep you in the camera. Anybody else? Hey, 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 hey. I saw that. Damn, yes.
Five, first. First and. Finals container silk or is just, that is just a little piece?
Yeah, we bought the compactors themselves, that's the unit that the the bins slide into and the friends. We bought the, the, what the, those bins go into. No, we bought two. Hey, all right, guys, hey, come on. We bought two containers, both open tops. Wanted to replace the one that was junk, the orange one, and then we had the overflow because no one, they wouldn't haul it and we needed one. Because when the, when the, the uh. I mean. The compact is, that's, that's not household trash. So we've got the open tops demo, we'll put household trash in that because it's going to the same spot, it's going to Landville. We had a few occasions that we had to close the transfer station early. Because we didn't have the room for the household trash and the demo and stuff, they were, we had to turn people away. Um, so that's why we bought that overflow, the bigger one, and that come out of New York, I think last year or year before last. Um, so that we wouldn't have to shut down the transfer station.
Yeah, I, I stopped when we, yes. The newer Packers.
Yep.
Thought we had bought those two packages.
No, no, we, we leased them, those were, belonged to Conway Center. Yeah, well, we didn't buy those, we couldn't have. But the problem is, if you take the, if we buy a container, it could get rotated out with Conway Center, we may not, it'd be a year before we see our brand new container come back, that somebody else has been using. So that's why we didn't, we continued with the lease instead of buying our own. So that's a good point, because if we're gonna, if the town's gonna start hauling its own trash, then we're gonna have to buy our own containers. So we're only gonna, we're gonna have to buy three. We already have three, we'll have to buy three and the truck. To, to do this. And I think there's a DEP permit for transporting the trash, I think we have to get. Well, our, well, our transfer station is licensed yearly. Um, inspected yearly, I think it's just, it's a formality, I think. Can't remember that guy's name. All the women's, she's now higher up over the transfer to the DEP stuff, so she's. I went back to my emails, she's like, she's, she really is very extremely helpful. And really quickly responded to us too, you know, especially even, she's very quick. Joe?
Um, Google D R, um, Keeper of the Records and the person that uh you requested FOAH from.
From there, Ms. Patty.
She's already certified too.
Yep.
I'm already taking this one.
Anything else? When's our next meeting, Deb? Yeah? Monday, six thirty, right, six thirty? Six. Get through it. Okay, uh, anybody? Morning, I'm good, right? I'm a little bad. I make a motion, which are? All in favor? Thank you, folks. Hey, don't you walk up here with an attitude. For me, this is.